Hey, what's up? Mr. Donaldson.
Okay.
Sure. Eight, eight, eight. Up here. You're on. Okay. All right. Right. Well, welcome to our first year of this year. I'm joined by the workshop with the Budget Advisory Board. So because of the fact that we have three new commissioners left, two commissioners and a vice mayor, um, that haven't gone through this before, I thought we would give you the job a very quick overview as to what the purposes of these three meetings are. Because we're meeting here today and then we'll be before you again next month on June twentieth. And then we meet again on August fifteenth. So to get you an idea as to what these meetings are, the Budget Advisory Board has probably one of the heaviest schedules of meetings throughout the year. And over this next month, we will be working over the next three weeks with three departments. Each Wednesday evening. So to give you an idea, this coming Thursday or Friday, each of the Budget Advisory Board members will receive three different department packages of eighteen to hundred and fifty pages. So we can spend our entire weekends in the next week preparing for that Wednesday's meetings, where we get into mitigating on your behalf. So it's something else we serve for you. We're appointed by you and we make sure that we are looking at the tax payer's perspective. The purpose of today's meeting is not to set knowledge right. It is not to discuss each of the departments nor their wish list or, you know, line item details. The purpose of today is to help give us as we are in here the direction as to where we want the budget to be over the next year. Whether that is a strategic reduction here, a status quo here, or growth here. So that the directors which were sitting over here who are kind of hitting lights will be the main cast by the end of this meeting, whether or not they should be coming to town next, over the next three weeks with wish lists or if it's impossible to fund them to be strategic reductions and to save their time and our time. At the next meeting is when we will come with a recommendation based upon the discussions that we've had with all the director chairs as to what we think the maximum at the alarm rate and the fire assessment fee would be. At that meeting, because of the fact that you will vote at the first meeting, your first commission meeting in July, what maximum at the alarm rate would be that we're giving to the property appraiser for the trip. Once that number is set, there's no change in that in August and September when we get on mitigating. So in the past, some commissions put together and stated a rate higher than our current sixteen year rate of four point one one nine three to give them some cushion when we went into the details in August and September before we go public with the proposed budget, which looks like this in September. So those are the purposes of the meeting. So today's meeting, I'm going to give you an idea as to where we are currently projecting existing expenses based upon inflation, based upon our, um, current contractual obligations of where we're at. And to give you where we were initially projecting, where our ad valorem, um, increase may give us additional dollars based upon assumption of where we think possibly the property appraiser is going to set their value. So today, at the end of the meeting, I'll be asking for an idea as to where we're at in those three categories of either status quo, reducing or possibly being open to increasing debt. I have statistics which I'll help you guide you over the next half hour. This meeting won't be a long, long meeting. Um, but we just need your direction so that we can better work with the directors as time to execute where you think otherwise our meeting next month and June will be too much of a challenge here. Uh, because that's when we really have to put pen and paper and make that decision as to whether or not we will be looking to increase that alarm. So that's my discussion today. So any questions at this point? No? Oh, no. Can everybody hear, Mr. Donaldson? Is there? You can all hear, okay? In the back? The balcony? No, there's no balcony. Okay. So I guess the idea that we were trying to make that here today by offering tickets for sale doesn't work. So we don't have much eyes, but we have a very ample board. Have we had any indication from the property appraisal system to, um, any, um, measure that he might, he might calculate as to be what the increase in the property valuation for being and how much we can expect to see if you're in city in a four hundred and eleven? I mean, that's a pretty much a chart here. Everybody wondering to come from south. So we have communications from, um, Mr. Hyer's office that it would be mid-May. It was saying, yeah, mid-May. At the end of May? Mid-May. Okay. So we don't, however, what? We're all about numbers, but what we put into our projection. And so what we do now today is when we look at the historical averages last year, it's a record.
That was twelve percent. And that was based upon one point six billion dollars of new construction. So when we're looking at the numbers, we're using a number of seven percent, which is what we're hoping to do that the property appraiser, which is higher than majority years. It will only be two years of the past seven years that it was that rate. So we've been averaging around five. If you look back ten years.
All right. So your calculations that you're going to present to us are based on the seven percent increase?
Yes.
Including new construction as well as increased evaluations?
Exactly.
Okay.
So if you take that seven percent so that we can all get an idea as to where, what that, what that means, a seven percent, if the property appraiser gives us a mid-May or early June seven percent, that would equate based upon a flat ad valorem tax rate of four point one one nine three that owned that us an additional fourteen million dollars in new revenue.
One-four.
One-four. In order for us to get a twenty million dollar increase, which would cover the twenty million that we're not getting this year from the affordable, from the, um,
Commission.
From the federal government for the American Cares Act, which we received in twenty twenty-three when into general fund, we would have to get a number from the property appraiser of ten percent. So that gives you an idea. If we come in at almost rec, at our second record high of ten percent, it'll net us twenty for general fund. And if we come in at only seven, we'll come in about fourteen. Um, just to keep things in, in perspective, because, um, you know, we say, oh, the city has a budget of nine hundred and eighty-five million dollars in twenty twenty-three. Um, and so for any of the public that's listening, um, of that budget, only four hundred and forty million is in general fund. And out of the four hundred and forty million that's in general fund, our tax revenue is only a hundred and ninety-five million. So when we think about a budget of almost a billion dollars, only one-fifth of our budget comes from property taxes. I always found that very, um, surprising as a taxpayer. I assume that my property taxes was the, was the big driver of, of our city revenues, but it's not. Um, one thing that I just wanted to point out, and when looking at where we've been, um, we're currently at sixteen years of a record rate of four point one one nine three. Other cities that were lower than us are now higher than us. So when we stop to think, when I hear other HOA presidents, et cetera, and they start talking about, you know, construction, new construction, new construction that is added to our tax rule has allowed us to keep our rates at the rates that we're at. New construction in twenty twelve was only three hundred and eighty million dollars in one year. We were at three eighty, three forty, five hundred. And then only in the last few years did we pass the billions of dollars in new construction, which adds to that tax revenue. So of that increase last year, the bulk of it, if we didn't have new construction, we would not have been able to do the budget that we did. Our fire assessment fee is our second biggest driver to general fund, and that accounts for fifty million dollars or eleven percent. And our utility service taxes bring in forty-two million. So that's another ten percent. So between those three, that's sixty-five percent of general fund. Today, I'm only really talking about general fund. I'll answer any questions if somebody had about water sewer, stormwater. We have cemetery fund. We have all of these other funds, um, parking fund, et cetera. But today, I really didn't want to get into the weeds on any of those departments because the numbers are premature. So today I was really just talking about, um, the general fund and what we do to support that. Next Wednesday, we'll be meeting with the department heads, uh, for transportation, mobility, finance, and human resources. On May seventeenth, we'll be hearing presentations from police, developmental services, and IT. And then on May twenty-fourth, we'll be working with Parks and Rec, Fire Rescue, and Public Works. We will then be looking at all of their wish list items and then meeting back to talk about how we feel there, if we were the city manager as taxpayers, where we think that the departments, what we like. So for example, in the past years, we zeroed in on, um, the additional license plate readers, the shot spotter for police, the nighttime goggles. You know, the tools of the trade that really helped are, are men and women that are working in the fire and rescue and in police. And we gave that feedback to the city manager and said, this is where we feel of the priorities should be on funding. And things like we were hearing from all of you in regards to, we need to have more enforcement for nighttime enforcement, noise, et cetera. And those were four additional positions that were added to the budget this past year. I just wanted to also give us an idea as to where we've come since, um, Dean, you became mayor and Steve, you became commissioner, which was in twenty eighteen, which is also the first year that I, um, had the opportunity to be appointed to this board. So over the past five years, um, this commission, um, and the previous city, two city managers that I've worked with, now the third, um, has made an increase in our, um, staffing levels in the, both the police department and fire and rescue. In twenty eighteen, the police department had seven hundred and thirty-six FTEs. And in this past budget, we added twenty-two positions in twenty twenty-three. The dollars devoted to the police department has gone from a hundred and twenty million to a hundred and fifty million in those same years, which is two, twenty-eight point eight million more in the police budget of twenty-three point eight percent since that new commission took place, uh, was voted in with their three predecessors that didn't, um, stay there full term. In the fire and rescue, the budget in twenty eighteen was eighty-six point, um, one million. This past year, it was a hundred and ten point one. We've added twenty-four FTEs, um, during that time and sixteen in twenty twenty-three's budget. Um, so twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, fire added twenty-one position. I mean, police added twenty-one positions and fire rescue added sixteen. Um, at this point, based upon the, um, vacancy rate, it looks like not all of them been hired or they were partially hired. And then because of attrition or resignations, et cetera. But our, our openings are funded, um, in that current year. So I wanted to highlight that. Our fund balance, in two thousand and eighteen, our fund balance was only seventy-five million dollars. This past year, our fund balance was a hundred and eleven million. And thank goodness, we have a fund balance, a healthy fund balance at twenty-eight percent. Because I can tell you the amount of money that we will all be discussing in the future from that tragedy of the flood that has come into the city and the expenses that we've had to incur until we get reimbursed from FEMA, et cetera, um, that fund balance comes into play. So I, uh, thank everyone for, um, continuing with the recommendations of the board and our, our previous auditor, now Commissioner Herbst, um, had put into his memos, um, to BAB and to the commission, the importance of a healthy fund. And what that means also is our bond rating. So the city prior to this, um, event, um, Susan has, uh, mentioned our finance director and assistant city manager that we would be leveraging about a billion dollars in new bonds. Um, and so because of the fact that we have our triple A rating that helps us in our interest rates, which helps the taxpayers over the next thirty years. So those were some of the, some of the key points. And then we need to get into really where is, where is our direction? So I know that we, because of the fact that it's becoming very expensive for everyone that is living in South Florida, we as, um, Fort Lauderdale have been delivering services at a very advantageous rate for the citizens of Fort Lauderdale. So I commend all the city staff and your, uh, the previous commission on making sure that we held steady on our ad valorem rate. However, there are only three cities now that have a lower ad valorem rate in the Broward County of the thirty-three. And they are Lighthouse Point, Weston, which didn't have infrastructure issues because it's new, and Hillsboro Beach. Those are the only ones that have a lower rate. Our counterparts such as Oakland Park, we are at four point one one. Oakland Park is at five point eight six. Well, Manners, five point eight three. Davie, six percent. Then other cities that have a higher crime rate in overall in Broward County, which then have a higher percentage to their police department. The tax rates for these cities of Lauderdale, eight point two. Uh, Lauderdale Lakes, eight point six. West Park, eight point two. Hallandale, eight point three. So our four point one one, the services that us as a city provide to our citizens, we should all commend the entire staff for the past fifteen, sixteen years of going to that. And why I stress that is, these are the realities of the numbers. We just talked about, we're looking at probably what we're hoping for is a seven percent in the base of the tax rate. That nets us fourteen million dollars in new revenue. We have increase in expenses that are built in that we need to count for in the twenty twenty-four budget. We have increases for our CIP projects, on materials, delivery costs, construction costs, et cetera. We have been receiving less revenue the past five years each year than what we're giving in our personnel costs increases. That isn't sustainable over time. When your revenues, increased revenues from all these record tax, uh, new construction is less than you're paying out for your personnel costs, your CIPs and your other parts of your general fund are suffering. They're shifting out. So I just want to caution us that we can't continue to do what we've done in the last five years going forward. So when we looked at our personnel costs, based upon, and we do not have signed contractual obligations or agreements yet in some of our, um, unions. But using the numbers that we currently have on the table, your personnel cost increase next year is projected at twenty million dollars. That means to break even and keep all of our other services the same and not have any utility increases, tell all the insurance companies, we're not going to insure our buildings at the same rate, that we're going to not have Parks and Recs at the same rate, that everything, we have to have a ten percent from Marty Care's office. If that doesn't come in, we're already in arrears. So my concern is, is that we know that there's other expenses that are going up. We know our utility costs are going up. Our insurance costs since twenty eighteen, just to give you an idea. And our employees, we are now spending in this new budget. One second. I don't want to misquote my numbers. Health insurance. We were spending sixteen point nine million dollars just seven years ago. This year, we are projecting health insurance for our city at thirty-four point three million dollars. That used to be eight thousand employee. We are now putting into the numbers fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars per employee. Our costs are going up on our personnel, on our benefits, all of this. And to think that we're going to be able to balance, we will. But if we only get a seven percent and our fixed increase in personnel costs, other things are going to suffer if we have the same ad valorem rate. Now, we've already talked and we know that there's, there's numbers in the budget. We know that we spent two point three million dollars last year on nonprofits. So are the nonprofits more important than our personnel? We know that events, we spent over one point seven million dollars on events last year. So between the two of those. And there's events that are not citywide events. There's events that are really geared for one district. What's more important, those events or staff in some of these departments? So those are going to be the tough questions that we're going to be faced over the next couple of months. So what I'm asking for you today is knowing that if we get a seven percent, it's only going to bring in fourteen million. Knowing that our personnel salaries, et cetera, are going to be twenty million dollar increase over last year. We don't have a twenty million dollar coming in from the cares act. Um, should we be giving the direction to the directors that we are in a cost savings mode? There are no additional personnel. We need to leave positions open. We need to be looking at redlining events, et cetera. Or are we open to being strategic and cut where we need to cut, but open to some additional? Or are we going to say, give us your wish list. What should we be? And what will that cost? Because if we take up only one ad valorem and we went to five point one, and I'm not suggesting this, I'm just putting numbers, that would gain... Is that fifty million? Fifty million. And if, but if we only went up point two five, which we were then still, we would be one of the least expensive cities. There would be twenty-five more cities more expensive than us on the thirty-three. It would gain us twelve point five. So it really becomes, do we want to, does this is a year where we want to add some additional people? Or is this year that we're going to, you know, be fiscally, um, reduction? And we need to have those tough conversations with the department heads. But what I need is some direction as to whether or not we're open to listen or if we need to tell the directors at their meetings over the next three weeks, don't waste Bab's time of coming with a whole laundry list and say, you need additional personnel, you need this and that, if we know we can't fund it. So that's what I needed to hear from each of you today as to where your direction is. So Mayor, I don't know who you would like me to call on first or if you would like to share something.
Does that complete your report?
Um, until I hear some feedback, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, well, first of all, thank you for your report. And obviously, it brings a lot in perspective and certainly gives us a lot to think about. Uh, and we're all probably going to have different points of view with regard to the direction. And we'll now discuss that. But, um, uh, you know, the, the amount of work that you put into this, uh, is immeasurable. I really appreciate you and everyone on your, on the advisory board for the amount of effort and time they, they, you all put into this. This is, this is unprecedented, but it certainly gives our city management staff, um, certain, um, the, the amount of input that he needs in order to move this forward. So, um, so let me begin with, uh, District One, Commissioner Herbst. Do you have any thoughts to share with us with regard to what Mrs. Donaldson has said today?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair Donaldson. So I share your concerns. I have always, um, adhered to a posture of fiscal conservativeness. Um, I think you've raised a lot of issues that have been concerning for several years now. As you said, this is not something that just developed overnight. This is a pattern where we are going to struggle to match inflows and outflows on a structurally balanced basis. So thank you for highlighting that again, uh, once again. I, I think from my perspective, we need to look at controlling costs. There are some things that I do think that I want to see the city invest in. Public safety is certainly that. Um, but I think in other areas of the city, we need to have a cost-conscious posture as we look at what we're doing. I'm not inclined to want to raise the millage rate at this time. I am of the opinion that we're going to be going into a recession within the next six to twelve months. And I don't want to burden the taxpayers who may be experiencing some financial stress at that point with a tax increase at the same time. So I would rather look to cutting costs before we start raising revenue. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And also thank you, Chair Donaldson, for this, this detailed report. And it's very helpful for me. Um, I took a lot of notes here, knowing it is the first time, um, opportunity for me to sit in this capacity, um, to learn a little bit more and understand how our, our budget actually works. Um, overall, I'm, I'm, public safety is one of my main concerns. So I do have, um, interest in, um, having a conversation where we could balance this, um, the funding where it will not impede on what we need to have for public safety. Um, I too want to, um, I don't want to make a decision. I want to be able to come together and, and see how we could make this balance when it comes to the opportunity for the increase of the property taxes. So that's something I want to hear more about to make an educated decision on. So understanding, um, what we're looking at in the near future in our, just overall in our economy, and at the same time to be able to balance it where we as a city could, um, still thrive and survive without being a burden to the citizens. So that's the balance I'm looking for. Um, with more details as we go in further looking at this, I'll be able to give some more insight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, also wanted to echo what's been said before me, uh, Chair Donaldson and the entire, um, Budget Advisory Board. The work that you folks do is, is unbelievable and I find really helpful. Um, and I always look forward to these meetings and these reports. And when I look at what your schedule is, even in between our meetings, it's really quite astounding how much time, how much effort. Um, I'm glad we were able to free you up this year and you didn't have to worry about the not-for-profits exercise that we did last year. Uh, so that's terrific. Obviously, it gave you guys a lot more opportunity to really dig in where I think our priorities need to be. Um, so I, I agree with many of the things that have been said by the commissioner and vice mayor before me. Um, before I really get into the weeds about how I feel about a millage rate increase, how I feel about moving forward with this budget, I think there's a lot that's going to transpire between today and our next meeting on June twentieth. Um, we're going to get that information from the property appraisers. Uh, I want to be able to dig in and see exactly what millage rate increases mean and how much of a millage rate increase and what that means in terms of revenue. Um, but I also wanted to be very cautious about increasing costs for our residents. Um, again, like has been said before me, public safety, uh, paramount importance. Uh, and we have so many other priorities, uh, in this city that I want to make sure are taken care of. Um, so again, for me, it's going to be a balancing game. Uh, I'm not necessarily convinced that we have to do a tremendous amount of cost cutting or even any kind of cutting, although I would certainly be open to looking at what that looks like. Um, but again, But again, for me, this has been very helpful today. I want to really though dig in a little bit deeper as we move forward and as you have your meetings, but I wanted to just say thank you. It's been really important, and I look forward to our next meeting because I looked at your schedule and I see that we're going to have a lot more to talk about. And I think we'll have a little bit more clarity from the property appraisers' office, and we'll have a little bit more of a handle of what we can count on. Maybe by then, we'll also know what kind of monies might be flowing into the city due to our recent tragedy, and so all of that factors in, and again, I just want to say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sturman.
Okay. Once again, I want to thank Chair Donaldson, the whole committee. You guys have done an outstanding job, particularly for me and for Pam, that we're newcomers on here. This is a big learning curve for us. So I do have one quick question that I was going through, was listening to what you were talking about. What is the, you're talking about the additional funding and for police and fire and public safety. What is, I, I think we have a different, what's the total number of, of police officers we have?
Well, currently in the 2023 budget, the total police officers, FTEs, are... 508.
But you had a number of 900 or something.
So Commissioner, there's a difference, there's a number of FTEs and then a number of sworn positions, which are you asking about?
No, both, the whole, if you break the breakdown, yeah.
So 550 is the number of sworn positions? And I'll get the number of FTEs.
Oh, yeah. Total FTEs, 747. I'm sorry, I mixed it up with, with fire and rescue. So we have 508 on, or 550 of sworn and 747 on total staff, and that was an additional 22 over the 2022 budget.
Okay.
And what is the current vacancy number? I believe it was over 40 the last time we met, is the chief here? 32, so, good job. So it's, so we've been able to hire some additional, that's good news.
And that's, that 32 vacancy, historically, that's, that's in line with what we normally would have?
I think that's been higher. Now, there have been times where they've gotten down to no openings.
Okay.
At least during my tenure here.
And the numbers with fire, the total with fire too, just?
The total fire is the number that I misquoted earlier for police, so that is 508 for total fire.
Okay.
And that was an additional 16 people for this past year.
Okay. And I echo what Commissioner Herbst said. No, I think there are ways to add efficiencies that we, we've alluded to before, so I have the same sentiment that Commissioner Herbst has with that. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturman. So thank you for bringing us bad news. But obviously...
I try to be real.
I know.
So it's not bad news.
Pouring cold water on us.
The positive is that we have been able to deliver a great value to our taxpayers over the past 14, 15 years, and that should be the positive message. We're a bit concerned about, based upon some fixed increases that we know are going to happen, that we're going to have some challenges. So I'll take your comments and then I'll try to wrap it up.
Okay. So obviously, the commission is always looking to find more efficiencies in our operations, and that would be the target here, trying to see where we can perhaps try to save money as opposed to spend money. And, and part of that has to do with unfilled vacancies. I don't know, I know we budget for these unfilled vacancies. Having 32 vacancies in the police department is significant. People are constantly saying, we need more police, we need more police. Well, yes, we do need more police, but we're already budgeting for those, for those positions. So it's not a question of adding more slots for sworn officers, it's a question of just how do we get them to, to work for us? And, and going to a lot of conferences around the country, it seems to be a constant refrain that many cities are, are, are stating that, that it's just hard to fill vacancies in the police and fire departments, no matter where you live in the country. So hopefully, we'll be able to get, we'll get, be able to get there. I'd like to talk, as we go further into this discussion, I'd like to talk about methodologies that the police department is using to, in its, in its law enforcement efforts. I'd like to see a, a presentation by the police department regarding community policing. Still haven't seen it. I, all I do is get complaints from people that police officers are not showing up quickly or, or, or they never see them around, and, and so we need to have a heart-to-heart talk going forward because if there's any, if people are saying, well, we need more police officers in order to fulfill the demand, the response might often be, well, we have a lot of police officers, we just need to, to engage in community policing so that people feel the police are there and feel connected to the police when we're, when we're trying to fulfill our responsibility of law enforcement. With regard to your statement that we have certain built-in costs that we cannot, we cannot forget, I want the public to understand that should we decide to trim any department or cut back on expenses, that would not at all interfere with any of our infrastructure projects. These infrastructure projects are separately paid for through bonding programs, and that has to do with parks and rec, that has to do with stormwater, that has to do with sewer, that has to do with our water treatment plant. None of those would be impacted at all because all those are funded separately. Is that correct, Mr. Donaldson?
There are a lot of CIP projects that are part of the general fund, but yes, stormwater is its own funding. The water treatment plant is its own funding source. We don't add to tax base for those, those are user fees. Same with the sewer, same with most of our parks bond. However, general fund, for example, the citizens passed a, the agreement to put $100 million into our new police station. However, the number came in at 136 million, so I think that was the last number that I've seen. So that $36 million will be additional revenue bonds, which will tax into our general fund. So that'll be part of the property tax on the general fund. So that payment, that debt service, will infringe upon our costs within general fund.
Yes, but, but the project itself is not going to be impacted.
No.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Right.
I want the public to understand that these projects are not going to be stopped, they're not going to be abbreviated in any way. They're going to continue to move forward because that's the mission of this commission, is to continue to invest in our infrastructure.
Absolutely.
And finally, speaking of infrastructure, we have, you know, the elephant in the room, the city hall. And that's a conversation we're all going to have to have as we get more data. I know it's much too early to say anything. I know Mr. Dodd is going to speak to us this afternoon at our conference meeting as we get more information about the status of City Hall, the building itself, and the prospects for what options we have going forward. So, so those are my only comments.
Okay.
And I appreciate, again, all the work that the committee is doing.
Okay. So then what I, what I want to do then is just do a final wrap-up. Commissioner Sturman, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah. The city manager and I were with a, a group of business leaders recently, and I'm just going to throw something out. Going back to police, they've been toying with adding a fourth district. There's three now and a fourth district downtown, and it's something that the business community was championing. And when you go through the budget for police, it's something, I'm curious if that's even feasible, what, how that would impact.
Well, currently, we have police officers assigned to downtown, so if we have a city and we all put it under one umbrella and said it's a police force for everyone, you would have the same number of people. So whether or not we divide it up on paper and say, well, we're going to have six commissions, or if we're going to have three, it's the same number of coverage, it's the same number of staff, because the citizens, it's not like we're not policing downtown. We are policing downtown, and unless the business district wants to tax themselves separately like a new CRA, and they want to do that, but, I mean, to answer your question, no, there isn't money to add a, a whole new staff facing $20 million just for our current staff.
I mean, obviously, there's administrative logistic costs chopping it up a little more too, but...
Yes, there's a lot of overhead additional. So just to, if I could summarize, so what I'm hearing is, if I take a group consensus, is that we're going to be looking at things as we have in the last couple of years. We're going to be very strategic reductions. We're going to challenge each of the department heads, where can we cost savings? But I'm hearing an open to listen to June, that if we come back to you and we say, we've, we've suggested these reductions, but we as, as citizens and your eyes and ears feel that there's a few strategic initiatives in public safety, et cetera, and this is what it's going to cost, and this is what it would add to avalourum. Do you want to hear that in June? And that's what I'm hearing, like Vice Mayor, you're saying, give me the numbers and I can make a more educated decision. Steve, you said the same thing. So we will come back and we'll say, these are where we think we can cut. These are maybe some events, these are where some other things, this is where, et cetera. And, but if you want to keep all your events, if you want to keep nonprofits, if you want to add any staff, these are where the numbers come in. We'll also know where the number is coming in from the county, and then you'll have to make the decision as to whether or not, well, we're not adding anything to the top of the cake and we're keeping the same cake, or we're taking the cheer off the cake and we're going to stick with our number. So we'll do the numbers to put together. So what I would need the directors in the room to hear, this is an open checkbook time, that I need all of you to come very strategic with reductions. If you think that you need to add something, then I need to hear where do you see cost savings? Because I'm hearing a very clear message, we're going to look at cost savings first, and then if you feel something is really required, that is an enhancement to the city that we really need, we will quantify that and we will then come back to you in June and say, this is where we see it, and these are the numbers, and we'll have it from the county, and then you can make an educated decision. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mayor, you know, I just want to add one more, what I think rather important consideration that we need to be mindful of. In addition to everything that we've already talked about, we are in the process, hopefully, of concluding our negotiations with police and fire unions, and those numbers are going to have a significant impact on the budget, both for the current year, because there's always a look back, because some of these contracts are 18-plus months in arrears right now. So we're going to have to fund the amounts that were not funded during those periods of time. In addition, they're going to add to our ongoing expense structure. So we need to be mindful of that as we conclude this, that whatever it is that we are agreeing to in these contracts are going to have additional impact above and beyond what we're looking at right now. So again, more, more expenses in the offing than revenue. Which basically says we need to continue to sharpen our pencil in these negotiations because obviously there's no money there. So, so we really need to be careful about that, but... Well, I'm not necessarily suggesting that. Again, for me, police and fire are my priorities, so I would be inclined to look at some of the things that we've already agreed to that I think are important for our uniformed officers, and maybe sharpen that pencil outside of the negotiation. So I don't think that, that negotiations is solely the area that we look at for cost savings. All I want to do is be mindful that there is another pending financial impact to our overall budget structure. Thank you.
What, when you say outside the pending negotiations, what, I'm not understanding, what, where are there, where else do you think we should, we would make up that money difference?
Again, this goes to the larger discussions about looking at the operations throughout the city.
Okay.
It has always been my belief during my time in government that the number-one reason that we organize and constitute ourselves in municipal government is to provide for the common defense, as they say. And so public safety is the premier function of municipal government, and to me, it takes precedence over everything else that we do, and it is my number-one option for full funding. Everything else is secondary to that for me.
So when you say full funding, does that mean whatever they are asking us, that we should give them, or we still need to negotiate price?
No, we, we absolutely need to negotiate a fair deal, but when it comes to making sure that we have adequate staffing, I think one of the things that was discussed a little while ago, as you brought up, is the difficulty that we're experiencing in trying to recruit. And the problem that we have right now is, due to everything that we have seen in the public safety world over the last several years, the pool of applicants that are interested in being police officers has shrunk dramatically. The number of individuals who are currently employed that want to stay employed as police officers is shrinking rapidly. People are taking retirements and they're moving on, quite frankly. And so we are left now with a situation that's very similar to what we experienced back in 2005, 2006, and 2007, when we struggled with very high vacancy rates back then, and that is that we are all poaching from other agencies. There is not a line of people standing at the door waiting to become a police officer these days. So if we want to hire people, we're, we're stealing them from Coral Springs. You know, Pembroke Pines is stealing them from us. We're sending recruiting trips up to New York City to try and recruit them to come down here. And in order to do that, we need to have a effective compensation package that we offer to make that attractive. I think you're seeing this right now at the state level, where the state legislature is proposing to reinstate the pensions that were reduced in prior years during the recession. They're now reinstating those. You're seeing those in a number of municipalities and at the state level. So I think we have to be mindful of the fact that we're in a competitive labor market for this particular category of employee. So it's a, it's a holistic package, Mayor. I don't think there's any one simplistic answer that says we do this to get that outcome. But again, my point in bringing this up is making sure that we understand that what we're doing on the collective bargaining side needs to be integrated with what we're looking at for everything else in the city, and we need to recognize that we have a limited pool of resources and we need to prioritize based on what we think is the most important function of, of government.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you want to add to anything before we conclude this meeting?
No, I appreciate the candid conversations, and I think this is very helpful. We're going to be looking at how we can make sure that public safety is amply funded and to make sure we have more PD presence, make sure we have enough fire rescue support. And we're going to look at, challenge the directors too, to look at strategic reductions. And so looking forward to bringing you back considerations so that we could all live with those, because I do understand the, the burden, the financial burden, it's not something that we want our residents, neighbors to have.
All right, thank you. Laura, do you want to add to this conversation at all?
I'd like to thank the Budget Advisory Board for all of their help and support through the process. We're going to spend a lot of time together this month, so I'm looking forward to that. And we'll bring you back a really good view of what our finances look like in June. So I'd say, you know, let's plan on a full hour and a half in June, because we have STAN-TACT to come in and we look at all of the modeling, so you see what the decisions in the current year do not just to fiscal year '24, but for the next 10 years. So I think those will be really good conversations, and we'll be ready for those, the second meeting in June.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the commission have anything further to add? There being none, this workshop is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll resume at 1:30.